Is that a little dramatic? The Madera County Arts Authority Regular Meeting is now called to order. And we'll begin with item number one. Additions to the agenda. Item identified as the preparation of the agenda for which there is a need to take immediate action.
Can anybody hear me better now? I can hear myself better now. I have identified as the preparation of the agenda for which there is a need to take immediate action, two-thirds vote required for consideration. So, anyone have an addition to make to the agenda or any modification? Hearing none. Counsel, do we need to adopt the agenda, correct?
That is not standard, but you certainly can.
Okay, let's adopt the agenda. So, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved, second.
Okay. It's been moved by Director Poitras and second by Director Rigby to adopt the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, three zero. Item two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Rigby, would you please lead us?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Rigby. Item three, public comment. The first fifteen minutes of each regular session is set aside for the members of the public to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the board, but not appearing on the agenda. Items presented under public comment may not be discussed or acted upon by the board at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public is invited to comment at that time the item is called for consideration by the board. Any persons addressing the board under public comment will be limited to three minutes. Presentation to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any handouts to the board must be submitted to the Chief Clerk of the board for distribution to the supervisors, excuse me, to the directors. Anyone addressing the board is asked to print their name clearly on the speaker sheet at the podium. Also, all persons addressing the board may state their name and county of residence for the record. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please approach the podium and state your name and county for the record. Seeing none, close this item and move to item four, the public session. Item four A, approval of the minutes for September tenth, two thousand eighteen.
I move for approval, second.
It's been moved by Director Poitras and second by Director Rigby to approve the item as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, three zero. Item four B, the ceremonial swearing-in of general member, board members. At this time, I'll hand it over to our volunteer clerk, Cargill.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me, say your name.
Okay.
Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
Do solemnly swear that I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation or purpose
Without any mental reservation or purpose
Of evasion
Of evasion
That I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter
Thank you.
Thank you. We should have headphones next time so we don't hear each other. It's getting confusing there. All right. Item four C, consideration and appointment of at-large representative from unincorporated area, Madera County. Can we get something from staff on this? And we'll hear from our volunteer staff person, Eric Fleming.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board, Eric Fleming. The Administrator. I just did want to report that we made an effort to do some outreach for the at-large position. We boosted an ad on Facebook and we targeted some unincorporated areas, our main populated unincorporated areas. We reached about sixty-five hundred people, but we only resulted with one person that was interested. So, we did want to just report that to your board and discuss maybe, or maybe recommend the possibility of doing some additional outreach, maybe trying some additional avenues, or if your board has an interest in looking at maybe the bylaws, if you have any interest in not limiting it to just the unincorporated areas, if you want to open the at-large position to maybe people in the incorporated areas as well, that may be something to get more interest. And I'm not sure if it was because everyone had the impression that, well, the project is in the city of Madera, so why would we take the time to do that, or we didn't get a whole lot of feedback, so not quite sure. It was a bit of a failed outreach, I guess. We did get one, so.
Well, the initial idea, premise behind this was to get as much representation across the county for this project, and that was why staff exhausted some effort to gather a pool of applicants. What is the pleasure of the directors? Any interest or ideas and suggestions that were made with respect to Staff Member Fleming's recommendation to either go back out again and/or consider including City of Madera residents as at-large representation?
Have you tried El Nido at all? Red Top?
No, we could certainly target those communities in future outreach.
They have the world-famous Fish Museum out there. But, I don't know, I think that, you know, if we could find great quality, you know, at-large members regardless where they live, I think that's maybe a noble cause or effort. I mean, we want the best people possible.
I just wanted to add to that. Arts Council sent it out to all of our membership throughout the county that was not in nine three six three seven or nine three six three eight. So, it also, on top of what you sent, we also sent, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify for the board that Section three dot oh one of the JPA allows for the exact same kind of modification that you were discussing. It says, "Without amending this agreement, the Board of Directors and at-large member composition may be altered from time to time to reflect the termination and/or admission of any new general members and/or at-large members." So you have the opportunity for this appointment to modify the composition requirements and allow for an increase in the qualifications or a greater variety of qualifications for what we are characterizing as the at-large member.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Chair, my opinion would be that, for the time being, I would share the same sentiments as Board Member Poitras in that we're looking for candidates that are interested in serving on this board and want to be a part of the process and have a seat at the table. I don't think that that takes away from the opportunities of incorporated areas or other extensions of Madera County, perhaps getting involved later in the process, in which case this board could then make the decision to extend to a larger board to maybe include somebody from the Okers community and/or Chaukshilla. So at this time, I think that it would benefit the board today if we move forward with probably amending that portion of the bylaws and accepting an at-large that would represent the, I want to say, the best interest of the project moving forward.
Thank you for those comments, Director Rigby. I would be inclined also to accept the suggestion of being more inclusive, especially since the project is cited here in the city of Madera, and unless Director Poitras has a reservation with that, the amendment, as I understand it, wouldn't be able to take place until our next meeting, is that correct?
The JPA provides for you changing this composition from time to time without amending the JPA, so you have some flexibility in dictating broader eligibility requirements than is currently set out in the JPA.
So with consensus from the sitting board, staff can go forth and expand its effort? All right.
Mr. Chair, if I might make a recommendation that we still include the candidate that showed interest in our list to reach out, that that person not be excluded from the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Maybe just make connection that we're going to extend the net, so to speak, and the process might take a little longer.
Yeah, and to clarify, the one application that we did receive was a great application. We just felt like, we thought your board probably wanted a few to choose from.
Excellent.
All right. So you have direction. Thank you very much for the presentation. Item four D, the ceremonial swearing-in of the Arts Council at large board member. At this time, because of the modification that was made to four C, we will be visiting the ceremonial swearing-in of the Arts Council representatives. And I do have before me the names that were brought forth from the Madera Arts Council. As second alternate, Rochelle Noblet. First alternate, Tina Unti. And the appointment, recommendation made by the Madera Arts Council, Dr. Julio Kane. Dr. Kane, would you please come to the dais and accept your seat among us and prepare to raise your hand for the swearing-in? You have a couple of seats to choose from.
Close this one.
All right. Ms. Cargill?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Kane?
Dr. Kane.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter That I am about to enter.
Moving on to item four E, the selection of the officers. At this time, I will hand it off to our volunteer clerk, Cargill. And I, well, before I do so, before I do so, well, because you'll have to ask for nominations, right? So before I do so, though, I did want to have this conversation a bit about this item. Setting aside the chair and vice chair appointments, the positions of secretary and treasurer, I would ask the, my fellow directors to consider holding off on those two appointments until the first regular meeting in January where we'll visit the reorganization of this board once again, in the interest of having time to visit, the opportunity to have a workshop on the board bylaws and the JPA, which, actually, the adoption of the bylaws is following this particular item here. And consider what the expectations are of those two positions, and also to begin some dialogue as to who can be considered for those two appointments. I've consulted with our council in advance and have been assured that we would be okay in holding off on those two appointments. Any comments from the directors?
I agree. That's fine.
So that being said, Clerk Cargill, if you could start with the nominations for the chair.
Yes, the floor is open for nominations for the chair, for the Board of Directors.
Ms. Cargill, I'd like to nominate for the chair, Dr. Julio Kane.
I'll second that emotion.
Are there any further nominations?
The audience out there knows Smokey Robinson miracles.
It would close the nominations and call for the vote. All those in favor of electing Dr. Julio Kane as chair, Director Poitras?
Yes.
Director Rigby?
Yes.
Director Arredondo?
Yes.
Director Kane?
Yes.
The vote passes, four oh.
Oh, thank you. Let's hope I don't have to use the gavel.
Too close.
Okay, I guess now we'll take nominations for the vice chair of the board.
I will nominate Charles Rigby.
Thanks. Yeah, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, do we need to poll the board?
I think for the, it's up to you, but we normally poll the board.
Okay, poll the board.
Call for the vote, Director Poitras?
Yes.
Director Rigby?
Yes.
Director Arredondo?
Yes.
Director Kane?
Yes.
Vote passes, four oh.
So, let's go back to the secretary treasurer appointments. We're going to wait until January to appoint them at our first January meeting? Is that clear?
So, the conversation, and can revisit this, obviously, we have the adoption of the bylaws coming up next on the item, on the agenda, and it's to give an opportunity to a complete board of five to visit that item together and also explore a workshop opportunity to visit the bylaws and also the JPA and get a handle on the expectations for those two particular positions. In doing so, we can, we are hopeful to have by our next regular meeting, that may be scheduled for as early as the first week of December, to appoint or accept a candidate for the at-large position, and hopefully immediately following that, to have the workshops to cover the bylaws and the JPA. The next regular meeting subsequent to that would be in January, which is our reorganization meeting. meeting as well.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's move to item 4F, which is the adoption of the bylaws. And you've all received copies of the bylaws. We had a couple of questions about bylaws at the last meeting. And here we are at our second meeting. We do not have our full board yet. I believe Mr. Arredondo is suggesting that we try to take some time to look at the bylaws and it's maybe a workshop format would be the best way to accomplish that, rather than trying to rush through it at a meeting today. So what are the rest of the board members thinking about that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, Mrs. Chair. I mean, I'm even noticing that some of the changes that we had discussed had yet to really be made.
Right.
And so maybe that could, that workshop would be beneficial to the decisions that need to be made on passing the bylaws.
I agree.
And maybe by then, we'll have our fifth board member? So is it the pleasure of the board then to postpone the bylaws discussion until we can have a workshop?
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, there seems to be consensus that we take more time on the bylaws and consider them in a workshop format. Do we need to determine when that workshop would be now? Or under future agenda, meeting locations and schedule?
Yeah, we could have that conversation following our next regular meeting where we would be appointing likely the at-large candidate. And at that point, all five parties can remain on a date.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, item 4G is a presentation on the strategic visioning for Madera County Center for the Arts. I'm the one who's going to do that presentation, so I'll shift to our co, our, what do you call, vice chair, in case there's any meeting organizational things you have to handle while I'm going down to the podium to do the presentation. Okay, Mr. Rigby?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. I'm Julia O'Kane, for the record. Members of the board and members of the community, we have been busy behind the scenes, doing some very important background work for the Madera County Arts Authority. We have had a committee working for a couple of months now to develop a vision for our arts center and to develop some key result areas that will help provide us with some direction for we as, where we as a board might be able to take some steps to move forward, to make our vision become reality. We had participants in this process, all of you were participants, as well as other members of the city, the county, the school district, the Arts Council, and members of our strategic planning committee. There were 35 people interviewed in this stage of the process, and 23 of them were able to come to our two-day planning session where we reviewed and approved the vision and then set out our plan for next steps through our key result areas. You have the complete report in your packet, and so I'm going to just highlight a few things today so that you can see what we did. First of all, first of all, we have, first of all, we have, there, okay. First of all, we have a vision. Madera Cultural and Performing Arts Center is where the community comes together to celebrate its heritage, identity, and cultural diversity through the arts. You can see a picture of the front entrance to the performing arts part of our vision, which will be across the street when they tear down the old courthouse. And so I hope you like, this is our vision statement. Also included in your packet is a more detailed description of what life would be like when we have everything done, when we have our renovated library, our new facility, our downtown, our park, and everything is renovated. We spent the afternoon of a Friday and the morning of a Saturday in groups that looked like this, and of course, we had to have lots of chart paper as everyone fleshed out their ideas. And we came to agreement on, first, our vision and then on our key result areas. So you might see some familiar faces there of the people who participated in those sessions. Okay, the most important thing I think we did that day, other than come up with our vision statement, was to come up with these things that our facilitator called key result areas. We came up with three areas, and these would form the basis of strategic planning efforts. And they begin to define what we as a board need to address as we move forward with the development of our Center for the Performing Arts and our downtown renovation. So this is the things that we need to consider, and then we need to talk about how we're going to get some of this work done. But the area number one is administration, maintenance, and operations. This is about ownership, who's going to own these buildings when we're done, roles and contributions and commitments that each of our agencies are going to make as members of the Arts Authority as we move along. Let me just say here that when we started this informally as a group three years ago or so, there were lots of oral agreements and lots of oral comments made about what agencies thought they would, might be able to do. But none of those were written down. So now it's time to think about, really, what the commitments are going to be and the contributions are going to be from each of the organizations that you represent. Second and big is financing and fundraising. We need to define our project and how much that's going to cost at full build-out. We need to start structuring the funding campaign to pay for what we're trying to do, and we need to look at various financing models, especially as we move forward into the Performing Arts Center. And then the third area is program, services, and communication. This is sort of the lifeblood of this project because it's going to be all about what's going to happen there or here as we unfold our services to the community. What will the programs be? What will the services be? How is all of that going to move to make a positive impact on Madera? And how then are we going to be providing services and programs for the whole county of Madera? Since it's housed here, it seems easier for us to get people out here, but how will we engage the whole county in our community for the arts? Okay, we came up, from all of those three main areas, we came up with recommended actions. This is, this becomes the beginning of our to-do list. Number one is to establish a clear, concrete strategic plan with milestones so that we can begin to make progress, put things in the order that we want to get things done in order to make our vision come true. We need to determine ownership. Probably first on the list is going to be talking about the library and how that's going to be owned and operated, but we'll have other ownership issues as we move along. We need to establish a level of commitment and the services and contributions that each agency brings to the project. This is an interesting area because, at least in the group I was in on that day, my group talked a lot about, they were board members from your organizations, who said, "We need to make sure that we're talking to our boards about where we can make initial contributions and commitments to this, to the project." And so that might be something we're going to start to talk about and continue over the years. We, of course, need to create an operating budget for the Arts Authority. We are going to have to spend some money, as you're going to see in a few minutes, to get ourselves started. And then over time, that is going to expand as we begin to take in money and use it to do our building program. At some point in time, we're going to have to consider hiring a director to serve as the organizer of the business of the Arts Authority. Somebody's going to have to be the one who keeps track of everything and everybody as we move along. And then we ourselves are going to be serving as liaisons with the community at large. We're going to need to be finding ways that we can take in input, process, and interact with the community about what we're trying to do and what our community hopes to gain from this project. We're going to have to come up with building and soft costs for the overall project. We have some initial estimates for what that building is going to cost, but there's a lot of soft costs involved in all of that, and so we'll have to determine total cost. Everywhere we went in the community with our stakeholder group, our strategic planning group, everyone we've talked to said it's going to be absolutely critical if we're asking people for money, that we have a plan for how we're going to pay for everything over time. We can't build a building that doesn't, that can't pay to keep the lights on after we open it. So we're going to have to think about all of the costs that go into the overall project. We're going to be looking at hiring a capital campaign management firm to begin to lead our fundraising efforts. The people on our committees thought that should happen sooner rather than later, so this might be one of the early reasons we need to raise some money for our budgets, to begin to think about how we're going to hire somebody to help us get a plan ready for marketing and our campaign. And then, of course, we're going to need to oversee fundraising grants and contributions to the overall project. Under programming, we need a programming plan which leads to sustainability of the center. You can have nice little fun things going on all the time, but if it's not making any money, we're not going to be able to keep the doors open. So programming is going to have to be in part to maintain the center over time. We're making beginning strides in that, and I think good ones. The Arts Council has moved from 1,400 square feet to 5,000 square feet. We just are finishing developing a budget that will help us bring staff on board, that will help to create and implement programs that will provide services, classes, and activities for the community and begin to up our revenue so that we can become sustainable just in the arts center area with our classes. And then finally, we need to create a community engagement plan. A major criticism of our work so far is whether we are, in fact, interacting with the whole community and the diversity of our community. And so we have to find ways to tap into parts of the community that we haven't addressed so far. So that's a lot of work, and it's sort of a laundry list of activities. Let me just say a couple of things in closing. I do come with some suggestions for how to get the work done, so I'd hope that the board may be in our workshop, we can entertain some of these ideas about how to organize ourselves. I see that possibly we could establish community committees. We could have a committee that's focused on fund development. They could be looking at foundations, and they could be looking at financing options in the campaign. We could have a group of program development that looks at what kind of programs and services we want to offer. We could have another committee that is working on management and administration along with the board and project planning. And we could have a committee that works on communications and how we're going to market all of this and continue stakeholder involvement. So we could use a series of committees. Each committee, according to our bylaws probably, will need to have one of us be chairman of that committee so that there's a way to communicate between the board and them. But that's a distinct possibility for engaging people and getting some of the work done. And we already began to talk about the fact that we need to educate ourselves as a board and bring all board members up to speed on where we are and where we're trying to go. So working on bylaws, getting our officers organized, and then our structure for how we're going to engage the community to help us move forward, could all be part of a workshop as is being suggested. If the board wants to get started fairly quickly, we do have a strategic planning committee that was involved in the stakeholder group, and then they were involved in the vision planning process that we used over the last two months. That group gathered together to find the facilitator to help us with our visioning. They would be willing to gather to help, do some research for the board about things like what's out there in terms of campaign consulting companies, and so they could bring some of those recommendations to the board for the board to look at, so you don't have to spend time as a board doing that. You could have the strategic planning committee work with you. You could also use the strategic planning committee if you wanted to help flesh out the strategic plan and some of the milestones. They could bring drafts of that to the board as well. So the board doesn't have to feel like you're on your own and the rats have left the ship and now it's up to you. I think we started this as a community, and I think we should continue it as a community, but with the leadership of a board that helps us keep our form. So I have, now looking at myself because I probably punched a wrong button. No? Okay, and done. I just wanted to start with, we're doing a cute little campaign around now, and it's to finish a sentence, and the sentence starts with "arts." And so I'd like you to think of one verb that describes what the arts do for you or for our community. So we came up with "arts unify," "arts engage." So what would you say? Arts?
Need some time for consideration.
Oh, come on. What comes to your mind? What do the arts do?
Arts reveal.
There you go. Arts reveal.
I think arts empower.
Arts empower.
Arts educate.
Arts educate. Right. Okay, very good. Okay. That'll be part of our campaign as we move forward, to get people thinking about what value the arts are. Do you have questions?
Yes. With respect to the mention of a facilitator?
Yes.
Has there already been discussion among the committee or elsewhere on how to fund the cost of facilitator?
A facilitator for...
A strategic action plan, for example? Or going forward?
No, we don't have a plan for going forward with how we're going to raise money. To do our visioning process, we had a donation from a member of the Arts Council and the community, and our strategic plan, and our planning committee, to help us get that step going. But now we're going to have to think about how we're going to raise money to move us forward.
So is the strategic action plan already in place? Is that complete? It's not, right?
No.
So the funds that were available that you mentioned, are there still funds available to continue the discussion and work on a plan?
No, this would be volunteer time.
Okay.
Well, the big one is going to be finding the campaign consultant to help us get organized for how we're going to market this and move forward with the campaign. But we don't, you know, the consultants that we talked to in developing the vision process did not think we should spend so much time coming up with, you know, 55 little details for each action step that needs to be taken. They felt that we know the basic steps, we just need to get them down on a piece of paper and start to get started, and then we can add more detail as we go along.
So is the suggestion to campaign for, to raise funds, is that the first step or one of the first steps then?
Yes, we want to get started on the library renovation. At least that's, the committee wants to, wants to do that, and I hope the board wants to do that too. Because that's our community base. That's the people who went to the library. That's the people who have a connection to the library. And that could be done in a renovation, that could be done in 18 months, once we raised the, once we raised the funds.
But has a cost or estimate been identified?
I'm sorry, a cost?
Do we have an estimate or a... Do we have an estimate or a cost tied to that?
Yes, that's about three and a half million. We have plans, we have costs, we just need money. And so we have to look at financing options for that as well.
And according to what you said earlier, a campaign consultant as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, great job. I think it's great. And while the chair takes her seat, I think it's also easy. I think that once we get, once we kind of get started on this library, I think it's going to not only show how serious that the community is about bringing in this project, but it's going to allow others, maybe outside, different partners, just off the top of my head, the Central Valley Community Foundation, who might be interested in coming in and partnering with us once they see that the library got renovated. They see, hey, Madera's serious about this, and maybe other private investors as well. I think that those are going to be our key targets, and I think there's a lot of people out there that want the opportunity to be partners in this. And so I'm thankful, Madam Chair, that you guys took the weekend to go over these points. And it wasn't for naught, and I look forward to working alongside of you, as well as those that get involved in the process.
Good. We have several people who were there for the session, maybe somebody else wants to make a comment? Share something I missed? No? No? Okay. So, in item 4H is consideration of future meeting locations and schedule. So we need a next meeting.
So you shared with me earlier that the first Monday of December may work out for, well, is available for volunteer clerk, at least.
Excuse me, she is being, she's a contribution from the Madera County.
Same kind.
Yes, she's, this is ways that we can all contribute to make this happen. And so the county's made several fun. Yes, right, right. So the first Monday of December, how does that work for our next meeting, for you folks? By then we'll know, then we'll know who's still on this board.
Yeah, let's go ahead and set it for the first.
Okay, and you have agenda items for that meeting. We want to consider the fifth person, right?
For at-large.
The at-large member. I would like to ask that at the next meeting, either the city or the county present to us an update on what's happening with the downtown and Yosemite project or with the county park and what's happening here, so we can get an update on what's happening with some of our other parts of the project. Or maybe both.
Madam Chair, how much time do you have? How long do you want to be here? We're doing a lot in downtown.
Right, so maybe we could do downtown. Okay, I'll put the downtown. We, I think we should find out what we're doing with our main street, and I think we've got some housing projects coming in, and there's lots of excitement about what all this is causing. Okay, okay. Any other items for that agenda then?
Madam Chair, I believe that the board earlier stated that once the fifth member is appointed, that they'd like to host a workshop that would involve both the JPA and the bylaws.
Yes.
Would you anticipate that workshop to follow that meeting? Because you're anticipating a fifth at-large member?
Yes.
Okay.
So then that meeting, next we would have the workshop. Okay, and we would set the date for the workshop when we get our fifth member, so that, okay. Set the date at December meeting. Okay, how's that sound?
Sounds great.
Okay, I don't know that we should plan farther than that. In the meantime, would the board like to have the strategic planning committee start to look at options for services that might be available down the road for campaigning and marketing, and bring you back some recommendations?
I'd like to hear information. I was absent from the general meeting we had, the workshop, and so unless the others have reservations, I'd be inclined to hear what they have to say and begin on some direction.
Mm-hmm, it's going to, if it's anything like what we've done in the past, it takes a while to get from talking to people to actually getting a proposal ready and knowing what we're getting into, and then finding the funding to pay for it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if you'd like to, we can do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Keep the ball moving.
Okay. And then we'll invite you to that, if you were able to come, you can hear the consultants and what they're talking about and advice they're giving us, okay. Okay, anything else on consideration of future meeting locations? Can we still meet here? Have we been kicked out of this place? No, we're still meeting here, okay.
Yeah, let's consider here.
And is 4 o'clock still work? So 4 o'clock? Okay.
Keep adding credits.
Okay, any member, staff reports?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair, nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, then is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Opposed? No. Okay, great, thank you very much. Where'd you get this?